Okay, let's call our board meeting to order on Tuesday, 27th of June 2023, the hour is 7:00 PM. And let me invite those present in the room to join us with their pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We have, we have a new liquor license hearing right out of the gate here at 7 o'clock. I'm going to read the hearing notice and I'd ask the applicant to come forward and sit here. Notice is hereby given that the select board will conduct a public hearing in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 138 on Tuesday, June 27, 2023 at 7:00 PM at Town Hall, 1009 Main Street on the application of Taste of the Himalayas LLC by Sukvinder Singh, manager, for permission to sell all alcoholic beverage as a common victualler on premises located at 1921 Main Street, Tewksbury, Massachusetts, consisting of an area of approximately 1,800 square feet in a single-story building. As always, we welcome input from the public. And with this notice, we recommend that written comments be submitted to the board on and before noon time on Friday, June 23, 2023. So we have, we have that information. I will note for the record, pursuant to what I just mentioned, that on June 23, we did receive a letter from Werner Gossels, trustee of Lane Realty Trust, located in Whalen, Mass. And he was writing in support of the application for Mr. Singh. Lane Realty Trust owns the actual property where Mr. Singh was formerly operating the Safran Grill. And they request that the select board support his efforts to bring this new restaurant to Tewksbury and understand that Tewksbury residents would like to be able to order beer, wine, or cocktails with their dinners. We also have a letter that I believe came in today on June 27. And this is handwritten and signed by, it looks like Ida Mulhane, Michael Mulhane, Renee Mulhane, and one other individual who I can't make out their name, but same last name and they are expressing, "Thank you for sending us the legal notice concerning Taste of the Himalayas for an application of a liquor license. Don't you think the town has enough places that sell alcohol? We think it's not in the best interests of the town. Thank you for your time." So we have those two items of correspondence. I'm not sure if my colleagues have both of those. So I want to make sure that I read those for the record. So let me ask you, sir, to just introduce yourself and give us your address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Sukvinder Singh and the business address, it's 1921 Main Street, Tewksbury, Massachusetts.
Okay, and just explain to us, you're asking for a liquor license. It's all alcoholic beverages, so you're intending to sell beer, wine, and spirits. Is that correct?
The, the goal is to, yes.
Okay. Can you give us a little bit of background that you may have with experience in selling alcohol or serving alcohol?
Sure, yeah. So I, I've owned and operated the Safran Indian Grill, which had closed down in the, in the time of the pandemic. And during, during the operational period, we did have an all beverages license that we had to, I don't know, let go because of the circumstances of the business shutting down. So, yeah, I mean, we've come to notice that, you know, the town did have some openings for licenses and in essence, we would just like the opportunity to, to get it back.
Did you serve all alcohol back then?
We, we mostly sold a lot of beer and wine. It worked well. And then as far as, as far as like mixing a lot of drinks, I did, I did not have a bartender. So it was mostly what was convenient for, for the people that are working.
Do you intend to have a bartender now?
That's the plan, yes.
So just, if you could, for my colleagues and my benefit, can you describe how you intend to store the alcohol?
Store the alcohol? So there's some shelf space within, within the bar area. And then anything that we tend to not open, we have a facility, a storage facility in the back area of the restaurant that we can store some alcohol if needed.
Is that, is that a locked area?
Yes, it's a locked area.
And have you been or are you tip certified?
Am I tip certified? I, I am not presently, no.
Have you been in the past?
Yes.
Okay, so you might want to consider re-certifying that, right? Okay, so I think my colleagues have the full application, the lease documents, core reform, the sign-offs from the town departments. Let me open it up to any other questions that you all feel you want to add to the ones I just put on the table. Mr. Hall?
I have a question. Since you're not tip certified now, are you going to have your servers all tip certified? What I'm getting to is, are you going to have a tip certified person on the premises at all times?
If, if it makes things extremely difficult, then the answer is no. I mean, we can just sell easy things like beer and wine and, and not, you know, get into all of the, the things that come, come with tips. But I, I would, I would assume like if, if we're running a full operation of the bar, then yeah, there has to be one person at all times there that is tip certified.
Okay. The previous business that you own, you said you served alcohol. Did you have any violations during that, that time?
We did not.
You had not?
We did not.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I think you asked us some of the questions I was going to ask, so I'm done for now.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Mr. Krabman?
So you're talking about, there's two different types of licenses. There's an all alcohol license and then there's a beer and wine license for this community. But you're asking for a full license.
Yes.
But you're not telling us you're going to get somebody tip certified. So you're kind of going to make up your mind here. If you're going to have somebody that's there, you got to make us confident that we're giving you a license with somebody who's actually going to follow the procedures of this town. So before I vote on something, I want to hear what your thoughts are of, I'm just not going to vote on a license without knowing what, hope for the best, you know, you really got to kind of tell us what your plan is.
Yeah, no, so, so what I was getting at was, I do understand that there are two different licenses. But, yeah, so the short answer is somebody will be tip certified.
Okay, I heard the question, okay. The next thing is, you, you, I know you're changing the name, but most of the people coming back are the same employees, same things. Is it the same, like, management, same employees, everything's the same, just a name of change of business?
Management is the same. Ownership as well. So yes, just a change of name. And with, with that name change came another partner, so.
That's okay. That's all I just need to know if it's, you got some experience behind you is what I was getting at.
Yes, sir.
Of what you're doing. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you had mentioned a bar and you did include the floor plan in your application. Now, see a bar on here? Is there a plan to add a bar?
No, it, it should be on there. If you're, if you're looking at the back area, it should say, maybe it doesn't say service bar, but there is an area towards the back that looks like a counter. I mean, I could kind of see her.
Can you come?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, is acceptable if he comes and points it out to us, please?
This right here, there's a counter here.
Okay, go back to the microphone, I'll share that.
Thank you. And you said you, a lot of your same employees are coming back or are not coming back?
No, the, the only same employee was, was myself.
Okay. And how many employees are you planning on having?
Like five to, like a full crew, like seven, eight, whatever it takes.
Okay, fair enough. I would like to see you come back with some more, a finite plan and well documented, but those are the questions I have.
Okay. Ms. Wellman, you have questions?
Chairman, yeah, just briefly, most of my colleagues have asked my questions already. Are you currently in operation?
We are in operation.
Yeah, you're in operation. And are you, you're not selling alcohol now, is that correct?
We are not.
And you haven't been since you opened this business, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Some of, there's some stuff that seems to be not included in your application. It's not fully filled out. But there, it's fairly minor. You know, 11, 11D, 11E is an answer that's disclosure of licensed disciplinary action that has neither a yes nor a no. You told our colleague that the answer was no. So there's a few other areas, but I would concur with Mr. Mackey. Your answers tonight, it seemed like you don't have a really strong plan about what you want to do or how you plan to staff your liquor license. You're not sure if you'll have somebody who's tip certified on premise at all times. You don't know if you're going to be able to offer cocktails versus beer and wine at all times. And so I think it would behoove your customers if you were more prepared.
I, I guess I look underprepared at, at the moment, just with the answers of my questions. But I personally, you know, am the manager on the application itself. And I, I believe someone other than myself will be tip certified in running the establishment and there'll be other people. So, but those, those people are, like, they'll be filled as, as things are operational within the bar. So it's, it's, what I was saying is, I don't necessarily have to sell, you know, spirits right in the beginning and overwhelm myself with, with a large menu of things and keep just the inventory in control. Bottle of beer is, is very easy to, to sell, bottle of wine is, pour and, you know, things like that that are easy to measure. And then, you know, go, go down the routes of when we are, you know, fully staffed and we, you know, just, just source the right people to, to run that bar scene, then I can have, you know, better answers for you guys. But I'm just being, you know, methodological, you know, within my head.
And you said you're operating now. How many employees do you have right now?
Sure, sure, about five.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else? Think we covered everything?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, yeah, I, I'm going to echo some of the comments that my colleagues have made. I think it's really important and incumbent upon you as the manager who's going to ultimately take full responsibility for the service of alcohol in your restaurant.
Sure.
To be fully aware of the obligations that come with serving, not selling, but serving, right? And there's really no distinction between beer and wine and hard alcohol when it comes to that. So, you know, my perspective would be, I, I would want you to go and get tip certified or make sure that one of your employees that you can bring in here is tip certified to assure the board that you've got the safeguards in place to serve alcohol appropriately. So I, I don't know that my colleagues necessarily agree with me. I'm going to ask them to offer a motion shortly, but that's kind of where I'm coming from.
Understood.
Right? We want you to be successful, but we also want to be safe on both sides of that equation, right? For the community and for you. So, all right, let me ask, it's a public hearing, so I want to ask if anyone in the room is here to speak to this item. And I don't see anybody getting up. So let me ask if there's either a motion to close the public hearing?
Sure, moved.
So the motion's offered by Mr. Krabman, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is now closed, so that'll bring us to our deliberation. Do my colleagues have any motions they wish to present to the board for consideration?
Mr. Chairman, is it an acceptable motion to continue the hearing and bring him back to our next meeting? And just have a further conversation, see how you've progressed? Because as, you know, Mr. Chairman has said, I think we want you to be successful. And I think a liquor license is probably going to be a big part of your success. So, you know, I think it'd be good to have, continue this conversation.
Second. Okay, so you want to table it to our next meeting?
Our next meeting, yeah.
Which would be July 18. Do you, you're making a second to that?
A second for discussion. Do we want to table that out a little bit further? Give him some time to get a plan together, bring in whatever staff he needs? I don't know if three weeks is enough to hire somebody, maybe get certified yourself.
I don't know what the process with the ABCC is right now, like as far as licenses, like the turnaround, is, are you, are you guys familiar or?
After we approve it, assuming we ultimately do it, will take some time to go through that process. So, but we haven't got to that level yet because we need to get you approved locally here, assuming that's what the board wants to do. So I think it's more important to make sure that you cover the bases here locally and satisfy this board, and then we can deal with the ABCC after the fact.
What is the, I mean, I'll try for July 18. And what, what is the date after that? Is that the next, next month?
It's August, yeah, probably.
It's one meeting per month in the summertime. I mean, the applicant could let the town manager's office know he needs more time. You wouldn't have, you could put that off if you needed more time at that point. But just to get you back here as soon as possible, if you can make that.
Hang on one second, we'll get the date.
The 8th.
August 8. Okay, would that be, you think that'd be better for you? Or do you want to try for the 18th of July?
Let me, let me try for the 18th, and if, for some reason I feel like it's not.
If you can't do that, call the town manager's office and we'll reschedule it.
Yes, okay, sounds good.
All right, so let me, I'm going to ask Ms. Wellman to restate her motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we table the liquor license hearing for Taste of the Himalayas until our next meeting, July 18, 2023.
All right, and the motion's offered by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, I'll vote in the affirmative as well, making that a five to zero vote. So, you know, you got a little bit of homework to do. And keep, keep the town manager's office apprised, and if you need more time, let us know that.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, wonderful.
All right, thank you. Okay, let me next ask our community development director to come forward. And we're going to talk about the housing production plan. All right, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Alexandra Louder, Community and Economic Development Planner for the town of Tewksbury. I am here speaking with you folks tonight in seeking an endorsement for our housing production plan 2023-2027. And I provided a brief presentation here, which you have received ahead of time. And you should have also received the plan itself, all 155 pages it. Hopefully it was some light reading for you.
Thank you. Is this document what is behind me?
Correct.
Okay, so I don't need to turn around? Just tell me what page you're on as you go, okay?
All right, so we're going to start on the first slide, which, how the community was involved in this plan's creation. So this endeavor started over a year ago in the middle of 2022. And that started with a literature review for existing documents, the previous housing production plan, as well as the most recent master plan, which was completed in 2016, and looking for just basic input to start crafting the framework for this plan. And the initial findings for that process were presented to this board on August 4 of '22, and then the planning board on August 22 of '22 as well, just to give the both of the boards, both the endorsing boards, an idea of what we're working towards. And from there, NIMCOG and Tewksbury staff organized affordable housing workshops. The first one being held on November 9, 2022, at the Tewksbury Library, where residents asked questions about the community needs assessment. So that was the initial phase of the plan. And then the second one was held on March 16, and that was held virtually via Microsoft Teams, which was very well attended. And in between there, we had a housing survey that was administered December 1, '22 through January 9 of '23, to solicit input about what types of development needs were missing from the conversation as it relates to housing, both market rate and affordable. And on the next slide here, this is a snapshot of greater Lowell households and Tewksbury households from the American Community Survey data from the U.S. Census Bureau. And it details that more than 30% of, oh, near, excuse me, a little over 30% of Tewksbury residents, as well as greater Lowell households, are spending more than 30% of their annual income on housing. And that is considered being cost burdened. And put simply, that just relates to Tewksbury having an affordability crisis. On the next slide, I am detailing here, what is affordable in Tewksbury? Very often, we're talking about affordable housing. What do we mean by that? So those numbers are based on the area median income from 2022, which is $126,500 for a household. And most affordable housing thresholds, at least here in town, are at the 80% AMI level, which means that a family of three is maxing out at an $80,500 annual income. And just to give that some context, two family members, so two parents presumably and a child, making $20 an hour would roughly have $80,000 working full-time. And that data was actually based on some entry-level teachers' salaries. So we're talking $5 over the federal minimum wage and perhaps an entry-level teacher. So that's kind of showing and giving real-life scenarios that this is, these are the people that can't afford housing in this town. And just because when we're talking about housing, you can never get away from the subsidized housing inventory, I wanted to give some details here. So we are still operating under the 2010 Census SHI because that number has not been updated by DHCD yet. So based on the 2010 census data, we are operating with a 1,080 affordable, uh, excuse me, 10% of 1,080 affordable units. So the current number is 1087, which is just a hair over where we need to be to reach that 10% safe harbor as it relates to 40B developments. And we have received the 2020 census data that's been tabulated, however, DHCD or the Executive Office of Housing Livable Communities, as they're, they're now known as, they have not updated the subsidized housing inventory, so we can really only make educated guesses at this point. And being extremely conservative, based on a number of 12,139 housing units to be adjusted for seasonal, the maximum 10%, we would need between 1,214 units. So if you take that and look at the delta between what we have on the books based on the 2010 census, that gives us about a 127-unit deficit. And on the next slide here, just looking at a snapshot of the median, median home sales pricing between 2012 and 2022. And one of the more remarkable notes here is that the median detached home price in Tewksbury rose faster than the Massachusetts overall rate between 2012 and 2021. And even more staggering, that the typical Tewksbury home that was sold in 2021 would not be affordable to at least 70% of Tewksbury households. So folks who already are homeowners in town would not have been able to purchase today. And that's likely based on the town being about 80% owner-occupied. So 80% of folks living here do own their homes and their mortgages may have been long paid off. They may have received them from family members or what have you. So it just shows that even the people who are living here wouldn't be able to move here today. And at 80% owner-occupied, if you'll follow me to the next slide here, that just leads to Tewksbury having a severe undersupply of rental units. And that in turn results in Tewksbury having the second-highest median rent in the, what is known as the Northern Middlesex Council of Government Regions. So there's nine communities that we kind of compare ourselves to, which includes Billerica, Chelmsford, Tingsborough, Groton, Drakehead, and Westford. And notably for Westford, Tewksbury is only second to Westford for gross median rent monthly, with Tewksbury being at $2,130 a month. And that's based on the U.S. Census Bureau 2017-2021 American Community Survey data. And Westford is at $2,134 per month. So we are, with the undersupply, these units are highly sought after. And a lot of them are much newer, so they can warrant receiving that higher price. And when we're talking about cost burden, on the next slide here, we want to talk about who is most severely cost-burdened. And looking at the households who are either moderately or severely cost-burdened, it's small, non-elder families. And another disproportionately high proportion is non-family households with at least one member over the age of 62. And here on the next slide are two excerpts from the, the survey that we put forth between December and January of this year. For the benefit of recording, I'll just read through both of them. The first one says, quote, "I would love to see my children, who grew up here in Tewksbury, be able to afford to live in the town they grew up in. One moved to Londonderry, New Hampshire, and the other rents in Tewksbury, but struggles to buy groceries and pay bills." The other says, quote, "Affordable housing that is actually affordable. A single woman with children and only one income, is one job at minimum wage, cannot afford affordable housing. And the waitlist for housing assistance can be up to 10 years." And just to give that a little bit of color, I have some information from the housing production plan itself, where the housing authority cited that the waitlist for families to get into affordable housing is 509, with 61 of those dedicated to local preference applicants. And the housing authority experiences one to two turnovers per year, which means that the local preference wait time alone is 30 years.
It's how many years?
30, three zero.
I thought you said three zero.
Uh, yep. So I won't belabor the point terribly here, but here are 15 goals that are cited in the housing production plan. A couple that I would like to highlight, goal number three, monitoring existing income-restricted units to maintain them as affordable. So not only is it important to add units to the subsidized housing inventory, but it's also important to maintain the ones we have. And very often in older developments like Merrimack Meadows, where those deed restrictions were not nearly as robust as they were, as, excuse me, as they are now, some of those units come up on losing their affordability, which I believe this board heard and allowed for the disbursement of funds from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And those are the kinds of things that we need to make sure we keep doing. Another item that I really want to focus on also is goal number four, creating more diverse types and sizes of ownership units. I would like to add that to say rental units, including types as smaller, single-family homes, detached duplexes, and townhouses at affordable prices that could serve as starter homes. Anybody who's heard Jenny Rate at NIMCOG talk, she talks about that missing middle, that relatively newly coined term, where we're talking about either 3,000-square-foot single-family homes or we're talking about premium condos. But that middle part that is really, really sought after is really not being served in the current market. And just following here, what are some implementation strategies for those 15 goals? The implementation strategies are in the dozens in the actual housing production plan, but I've pulled out a few here. Maintain the SHI by continuing to monitor expiring units and pursuing the right-of-first refusal operation. and pursuing the right-of-first refusal opportunities, which I highlighted with the development at Merrimack Meadows. Working with Tewksbury Habitat Home Build and the Lowell, Greater Lowell, huge, oh, excuse me, the Greater Lowell Habitat for Humanity, too many eces, to create affordable homes on small lots through infill properties, opportunities. Strengthening the Family Suite Bylaw through as-of-right accessory dwelling units. So currently, we only allow for what would be colloquially known as in-law apartments as family suites, which are limited to 1,000 square feet. It is a planning board special permit. It is allowed only for related family members to the homeowner, and it maxes out at two bedrooms and three related family members. So a lot of other communities are exploring making not only the ADUs by right, which means just by a building permit, but expanding it to be non-family members. Lowell, I believe, brought it to their city council in the last couple of weeks. I have not followed up with their planners. I'm not sure how that went. But it's something that a lot of folks who want to stay in their homes here, I get calls regularly. They want to know, can they rent out a portion of their house? And letter of the law, I can't tell them that they can. They may have an en suite, something that they had built into the home, but they want to create a separate unit. That creates better opportunities for more housing. And research and identify areas and residential districts with smaller lots than those zoning districts allow, evaluating for feasibility of reducing minimum lot size in those areas. So across the entire town, we have one-acre zoning. One acre, 150 feet of frontage, 25-foot front setbacks, 15 side and rear. And unless you can prove that your lot was created prior to the adoption of the one-acre zoning, which I believe is 1956, then you have a non-conforming lot that you cannot build a house on, unless you go to the Zoning Board of Appeals, but even then, you have to prove a hardship. So we have a lot of smaller lots that are perfectly suitable for a 1,400 or 1,500-square-foot home, but they can't build on it, just based on the constraints of the current zoning bylaw. And evaluating allowing two-family dwellings in the R40 district and other opportunities for adaptive reuse to residential. So I'm sure you folks are well aware, we have the Residence Inn Long-Term Stay Hotel at 1775 Andover Street has applied for their comprehensive permit, and they will be heard by the Zoning Board of Appeals this Thursday evening. And that's a great opportunity where we're going to see about 132-in-one-bedroom-and-studio apartments come onto the rolls as rental units here. And finally, incorporating community engagement into discussions about and for decision-making related to affordable housing. So we're certainly going to see that come up in earnest with the MBTA Communities legislation. But it certainly will have to be a part of everything we do as we try to address this housing crisis. And I am happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you for walking us through that summary at a high level. We appreciate that. Let me open this up to my colleagues.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Wellman.
Comments and questions? I want to thank you and your colleagues for the work and for NIMCOG as well. I attended the outreach sessions at the library and the team sessions, and I thank you for that work. You guys did a really good job. And I appreciate the 155 pages of reading. I haven't read it yet, not all. I did look at it. I appreciate the summary.
There's lots of charts and visuals, too.
I do appreciate a Gantt chart as well, and also all the visuals. It's important, our Housing Production Plan, as part of our strategy for overall increasing affordable housing in Tewksbury. And it's poignant to read some of the numbers, because when I was divorced and became a single mother with two children in school, I did not meet this 80% threshold, working in public, the public sector. And I changed, I changed my career. So this is really applicable. I receive phone calls, and you and I have spoken over time, and I've talked to other people in town, I receive phone calls monthly from single parents, male and female, and from elderly women in particular, who are losing their housing. And so I see these numbers play out, you know, in phone calls with folks who are in danger of losing their housing. They don't know what to do. And they're working really hard, and they live in this community today. So this is really one of the most important jobs that we have as a select board, as a community, is to do what we can to ensure that there is affordable housing for our residents and for people who wish to come and join our community. I would like to know if there is a structure or a way that we can get some recommendations from you, and perhaps technical assistance from NIMCOG as to articles that we could bring forward at October Special Town and then May Annual Town Meeting next year. This board has made it a priority to work on affordable housing as part of our goal-setting that the chairman began last fall when we convened, I think it was. And so I would like to know sort of what are the most actionable, kind of low-hanging fruit that we can do? What can we do that's more strategic and positional? You've talked about some of those things tonight. And then what is the best way that we can utilize our Affordable Housing Trust Fund? To identify opportunities that come before us and to maybe create opportunities, perhaps working with Choice Housing and David Edison in Chelmsford. He does just amazing work. And with other organizations to put together some of that work. And I appreciate what's being done with the Residence Inn and all the work that you have done and the town manager to continue this work. So this is really important, and I feel it personally, so thank you.
Absolutely. So I'm going to take just two things that I'll quickly answer. So talking about low-hanging fruit, I think the accessory dwelling unit bylaw is probably something that's relatively easy to look at. There are sample bylaws supplied by Executive Office of Housing Livable Communities, formerly DHCD. They have some model bylaws that we can look at and see if we can, you know, fit them to fit our community. I think that's probably the easiest. But a lot of them are going to take some very careful consideration and community engagement, particularly if we consider small-lot zoning. We want to look at which parts of the town that fits as a characteristic, rather than put it in an area that just means someone's going to split their lot three ways.
Sure, of course.
So that's an example of one that would take a little bit more consideration. And to touch on your question about how to best spend the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, again, the easiest way is to look for a buy-down opportunity. So I mentioned the right-of-first refusal, right-of-first refusal that came from the Merrimack Meadows development, looking for new opportunities at the Woodhaven or at even deeper affordability or more affordable units at the Residence Inn. But getting in early with the developers and having those conversations to not only get the figures, to really find out the actual numbers we're talking about per unit, but to also make sure that they are with us from the beginning. Because the other complicated part of this is that when they are funding these projects, they have a set of investors who have a set of expectations. And they want to see what the saleability of the project is and the maintenance for the life of it. So it's really important to get in at the ground level on those items.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, I just have a couple of comments. Thank you so much. This is very important, and I appreciate the hard work you put into this. I do know that, I've seen many announcements recently from the governor's office, that they're going to be making this a priority of the governor's office. I know we got the MBTA guidelines that came through of what we're supposed to do, which I still, I don't know any community around us that starts scratching their head. They put mandates on us, but they gave us no funding to do it. So they want us to tell somebody to do something with no funding and tell private developers what they must do with their property. Good luck with that. But I just, some of the things that I see also is that, you know, a lot of cities are getting funding for this, and they're getting things. We're a small town. We don't tend to get it. You know, you'll see something in Lawrence, Lowell, Boston, where there, all of a sudden, there's availability of funding to help build these type of things. Is there anything that we would qualify as a, is there any, like, small-town loans? Is there any, like, program that helps with the smaller communities? You know, if the cities are getting something because of the congestion of what they're doing, is there anything that helps to, I mean, we keep going under our 10%, but sometimes when we're making these developments, I worry, there's a yin and a yang for everything. When I see a study that, you know, there's a problem with mental health in the communities, that, you know, they're asking people to check on anxiety and problems and this and that, and all the things that are happening as, you know, coming out of COVID and all the other things. And so sometimes the developers come to us, and they want to jam as much of a footprint as they want. And for us to get those affordable units, it's almost like we've got to give them, build every square inch of that lot, so that we can get five or six units. And so do we really, does that make Tewksbury better by doing that?
Sure, so I'll address a couple of things that you noted. We do have, there's a couple of components to the density per acre. So under the new zoning bylaw that was adopted in May of '22, as particularly Mr. Mackey and Mr. Johnson will be highly aware of, we put a seven-units-per-acre cap on all multifamily housing. Now, that is directly in contrast to the proposed MBTA Communities zoning, where we have to zone for up to 15 units by right. But that's not without parameters. We do still have the ability to put in height restrictions and setback restrictions. And so they're not going to be able to just completely, you know, massacre the lot, the lot, for lack of a better term. So there is a decent amount of control in that, and we're only just starting the MBTA Communities provision. So for regular building, they also don't have the option to submit a fee in lieu of constructing affordable units. For multifamily housing, that is not allowed anymore at all. And for open-space residential developments or OSRD subdivisions, which means that in consideration of permanently protecting a certain amount of acres in a subdivision, that developer can then come under the one-acre-per-household minimum. So for OSRDs, they are required for 10% affordable housing, unless the town is over the 10% SHI minimum requirement. So there is a, like you said, a yin and a yang. There's a lot of push and pull on the density. So we do still have a reasonable amount of control there. And as far as funding opportunities are concerned, there are opportunities. They are extremely competitive. And I look at everything that comes across my desk, and either we are not eligible because they have some really, really, and I say they, you know, the proverbial they, the state, the other organi, the agencies that put out these grant opportunities, they're either incredibly narrow in how you fit into that box to get that funding, or when you do apply, it's really nice application, but try next time. So we are still trying, but it is extremely competitive.
And just one last comment. I mean, this is, as Jane said, this is one of our priorities that we made when we made our top priorities. And you can't do this alone. So we appreciate you trying and putting the effort forward. But I think, you know, we've been very busy with a lot of other things that have been coming up recently. But I think it's time for us to make this work. I think we're going to have to work with our own partners in the community. Maybe like a joint meeting of the Planning Board and Housing. We've talked about it in the past, where we've met previously with the Planning Board to discuss things. We've talked about meeting with the Housing. Maybe if we had some type of meeting that maybe get everybody's all on the same page. I think that would make your job a little bit easier, so you don't have to go to one department and another and explain it all. Let's get together and see if we can work through this. So hopefully, that'll make your job a little bit easier.
Oh, yes, all five of you and all the five planning members are my allies, so get ready.
All right, no, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I had.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes, I have a question. I just want to go back, thank you for this, by the way. I want to go back to that, the family suite.
Yeah.
Do you know, is there a lot of family suites that are vacant right now?
That's a tough question to answer, because they are meant to be occupied by family members of the homeowner. So presumably, if the home is occupied, then the family suite is likely also occupied, because they're not rental units. They're not meant to be that. And because we are permitting, it feels like we're permitting them constantly. I would hazard a guess that, no, they're probably not.
I really don't need to know the exact number, but my thinking is that if somebody has a vacant unit, can the Planning Board give them a variance to rent? They can't.
We don't do use variances, no, unfortunately. So we would have to overhaul the family suite bylaw.
Yeah, because it seems like a waste not to, you know, in, when you rent it, you rent it under some type of condition that you rented at this rate or at an affordable rate. Now, I just want to go back one more tree on goal three, monitor existing income-restricted units. Is that being done?
Yes.
And is it being done strictly?
How do you mean strictly?
Are they auditing the people's income? Is...
Yes, so that's certified by the Housing Authority. That's a responsibility they have, yes.
There's nobody living with, you know, one unit, nobody's moving in?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
No, they are at, I...
And the reason I ask that question, because you said the turnover rate was two.
The, it's an average of one to two turnovers per year.
Per year?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not a lot of turnover for that amount of units. That's why I wanted to double-check and make sure. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm going to reiterate the great work. We made this a priority. We should probably get another session on the books to follow up on that. But a couple of questions. One being those, was it 127 rental units? Was that calculated in the current number for that 1087 affordable that are currently?
No, so 127 is the delta between what is projected to be the minimum requirement after the 2020 census is affected on the SHI versus what we have on the books today. So what we have on the books today is 1,087. And what we're projected to likely need is 1,214. So that 127 is what we're likely to fall short of once the SHI is updated.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, the suites from hotels that are being converted?
That's going to be approximately 130 units.
130, okay. I mean, that math seems to line up pretty well. It doesn't solve the problem, but...
No, it's incredibly convenient, and it helps us be able to maintain the control to add units the way we want to.
That was my primary concern, making sure we're not going to fall under. And as soon as those numbers hit, we get hit with a big project.
Theoretically, no, but we'll have to wait and see what DHCD says.
Awesome. And the last question, as we've mentioned MBTA a few times throughout this, do we know what the impacts may be? Do we have any, I know it's still very early days. There's still not a lot of guidance. Things are still very ephemeral. But do we have any thoughts on how this may impact?
Not really, because we need to decide where it's going to go first. And if you'll allow me to plug, I launched a survey late this afternoon out to the community. I gave it to all the local media, and it's posted on the town website for residents to take the survey and rank the six proposed districts that were on the action plan that we submitted earlier this year to maintain an interim compliance. So if you visit the town website on the homepage there, under News and Announcements, I do have it pinned there for the next month. And we're looking to take the information from that survey and hold follow-up workshops with folks similar to how the Housing Production Plan was formulated. So we're hoping to have the survey completed by the end of July. So early August, we'll start working with NIMCOG to help us with a little bit of our GIS, and then hoping to schedule something for early to mid-September to really get people in the room talking about this.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, I just have one question beyond, certainly, it is one of our priorities. So we, I, I'm going to assume that our board is going to be in complete agreement with supporting the plan. But you spoke about some examples of where we've bought units and bought down units, and we've done that with fits and starts as opportunities have arisen. Do you have an inventory of what is on the horizon? Or is that something that we're completely reacting to when, like, a unit goes for sale?
Sure, so when units are in danger of coming off of the subsidized housing inventory, we are exercising that right-of-first refusal. We don't know when those are going to come up, and those are entirely reactionary, which is, you know, not ideal, but just making sure that we have the buy-in and the resources to act on those opportunities as they come up, which so far, we've been able to do.
Yeah, okay. And I, my recollection is at this board level anyways, we've approved virtually all of those. It makes good sense. But it would be interesting if we could develop an inventory or a potential inventory to quantify that.
Certainly.
I know it's not an easy thing to do. Okay, I'm not going to ask further questions. We, I know this is a huge document for all of us. I know a lot of work went into it. It is a very sobering picture in many respects. But also, some of this is a byproduct of we're a desirable community to live in. And we're in a location that is ideally situated to two major interstates. So that sometimes drives the market. And, you know, people who have been here for a long time have benefited from that. And it makes it more challenging to get here. But, you know, there's pros and cons to the whole discussion on any of these subtopics, so. All right, you need, I assume you need this board to take action. Before I ask my colleagues, I know you met with the Planning Board. Can you just, for the public's benefit, elaborate on what action they took?
Sure. So last night on the... So, last night on the June 26 Planning Board meeting, there was a 3-0 motion to endorse the plan. So, I received an endorsement from the Planning Board. I seek one here tonight from the Select Board, and from there, I'll be able to move on to the certification from the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities.
Okay, terrific. All right, so if there's no further questions, let me ask my colleagues if there's any motions to the effect that Ms. Lauder just stated.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to endorse the Housing Production Plan as presented.
Second. Okay, so for our Recording Secretary's benefit, the motion was offered by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Holland. And this is a 2023 to 2027 Housing Production Plan?
Correct.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will vote in the affirmative as well, so you're eight to zero at this point.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna move to residents' portion of the meeting, and I'll invite any resident who's present who wishes to address the board to come forward to the podium. And if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself with your name and address, so we can capture that in our minutes, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Is this working? Yeah. Hi, my name is Anne Marie Stronach. I live at 14 Pillsbury Ave, here in the desirable community of Tewksbury. So, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I had other plans tonight, but I canceled them. I felt compelled to come and speak publicly regarding the Town Manager's Deputy Chief's appointment. Before I share my thoughts, I want you to know that I completely support our chief and our entire law enforcement community. I am confident that raising my voice will be accepted for its intent to advocate for Tewksbury in the best possible light and not cause me any grief. It is my understanding that the Town Manager will be requesting your approval for an additional Deputy Chief's position, because one of the recommended candidates is the spouse of our top law enforcement officer. Again, I wanna be clear. I respect and support our police department. I believe both candidates are well-qualified. My concern is about the unseen. I believe that the qualifications are clouding the judgment of the appointment without consideration of the innate bias the position and the appointment possesses. As you know, bias leads to factors that, based on human nature, can generate irrational behavior in a professional work in world. Innate bias may inhibit the ability to make optimal and objective decisions under conditions of uncertainty. Some biases may be subconscious and not even align with one's conscious decisions and biases. Human nature is complicated. Unconscious bias can have significant impacts and harmful unintended consequences. That worry is keeping me up at night. Fifteen years ago, we had two Deputy Chief positions. One was cut because of budgets. Our Town Manager, masterful financial planner. I would go so far to say that budgeting is his greatest strength. In May, our town meeting approved the FY24 budget. Yet, here we are, a month later, asking to approve a position that was not a part of our budget. Why? I'm wondering, is this an attempt to mitigate a confirmation bias of the appointment? I'm wondering, does it? I'm wondering about conflict of interest, which seeks to prevent conflicts between private interests and public duties. I'm wondering, will this promote Tewksbury's trust? The public trust? The confidence of our public? How will this impact our town's reputation and the public perception of Tewksbury? This resident is counting on you. I'm counting on you to hope that you recognize the potential of the unintended consequences and seek an alternative solution. Please, as I have watched you time and time again, make the decision that puts Tewksbury in the best possible light. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move to new business. And that brings us to Town Council reappointment. And I'll note for the record that Town Council Attorney Feely is present in the room this evening. And I just wanna say, we were blessed to have many, many, many years of service by former Town Council Charles Zerulis, who passed away now probably a couple of years ago, sadly, during the COVID pandemic. But we were equally as blessed to have the baton actually co-counseled for some time by Attorney Feely. And then Attorney Feely has assumed duties as Town Council for the town of Tewksbury. And I believe that our community has been exceptionally well-served by his guidance and counsel. And I know the Town Manager can speak more directly to that, 'cause he interacts with him on a regular basis as do our managers. But I think we are very, very fortunate to have the opportunity to reappoint Attorney Feely again this evening. So, I just wanna make that comment for the record and thank him for his efforts. Let me ask if my colleagues have any further comments. If not, I'll ask for a motion to appoint Attorney Feely as Town Council through June 30 of 2024.
I just have one question. We're appointing this for a one-year term. Is that something that we must do as a one-year term? Or do we have the ability to do something that would be not that... I'm looking at it, I know it's something that's on our thing for our thing, but I would like to, this way. I'll make a motion to do the town appointment for, once we're closed, to approve the one-year town year appointment. But I would like the Town Manager to look into something if, next time, if we can do this for like a three-year or something, if council is acceptable to that offer.
Yeah, my recollection is we've always done one-year, but the question would be whether that's tradition or requirement. So, we can look into that.
Second for discussion.
Ms. Wellman?
Through you to the Town Manager. What is the approximate annual spend for Mr. Feely's services? 'Cause that speaks to the procurement piece of it. I know you weren't expecting that question, so I apologize. Yeah, I could guess.
I did 125,000 a year for Town Council services, but past some years, we have a little spetac. Probably also include any special councils. So, FY20, we spent around 117. FY21, 96. FY22, 20. And in those years, we actually had 150 appropriate issues. FY24, maybe 125.
That's, that's great, thank you very much.
All right, so I think I had a motion, and I believe Ms. Wellman had a second. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will vote in the affirmative as well. And I wanna thank Mr. Feely for his service again. Thank you. Is there an original document that needs to be executed somewhere? Okay, thank you. All right, we have a road race, Burners, Great Lakes, 5K for Women. Road Race, request for approval. This is a race that takes place in the city of Lowell predominantly. And they will be entering their 42nd year of running this race. Thank you. It enters Tewksbury at the intersection of Clark Road and Country Club Drive. And they are requesting approval from this board because of that impact on Tewksbury. Our Police Department Safety Officer has reviewed the request. And you each should have June 20, 23 correspondence from Officer Welsh that details her approval or recommending approval to us, provided that the race organizers adhere to what the City of Lowell Police Department recommended. And there will be a Tewksbury Police Officer at the intersection I mentioned during the road race. That race is taking place at 7:00 PM on Thursday, July 20? Did it already take place? Oh, July 20?
No, July, you're in June.
Sorry. I thought June.
You're gonna say what?
Okay, so July 20 at 7:00 PM. Are there any questions about this? And if not, can I ask for a motion?
Make a motion to approve the road race, approval for the road race as presented.
Second.
All right, motion made by Mr. Krappman, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The chair votes aye as well, so that's a five to zero vote for those keeping count. We now have an appointment to make as the school committee designee to the Tewksbury Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee, Advisory Committee. And the school committee has requested that we approve Katie Anderson as a member of the committee, and that would run through April 30, 2024. Is there any discussion on that matter?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Is there any opportunity to change that term to expire to like June 30, 2024?
I think we have appointed all of them to April 30.
We haven't appointed anybody for, well, maybe for next year, but, but, yeah. It just doesn't align well with the school committee appointments. So, it's fine if you want to, it would be...
If you're okay with it, let's make the appointment tonight on this term and would take away, as we did with the Town Council appointment, and research the term, and if we need to come back, we can extend it.
That'd be great, yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's great.
All right.
Make a motion to appoint Katie Anderson as the school committee designee for the Tewksbury Diversity Equity Inclusion Advisory Committee.
Second. All right, motion is offered by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. And Mr. Montero, if you can help us with that. I can't recall, I think we had some reason to use April 30, and it may just have been coincidental with other appointments. But if there's a basis on this committee, we can revisit that.
We need to take some more appointments to this committee as well. I know there's some applicants that have come in, so...
Yeah, we'll do some interviews. Okay, so that brings us to the Town Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one thing prior to getting to Town Council invoices. I wanted to discuss my appointment of Deputy Police Chief. If the board would mind, I just wanna run through the process that took place. And again, just reiterate what my decision was to make the appointment. So, as many of you know, Deputy Police Chief John Voto gave his notice for retirement, and that takes effect July 31, 2023. This past January, mid-January, in anticipation of this, I sent out proposals to six firms to conduct an assessment center in accordance with civil service guidelines. This assessment center would generate a list of candidates for the position of Deputy Chief, from which I would make an appointment. After receiving the proposals of all six firms, I contracted with John Parrow Consulting and Associates to conduct the Deputy Police Chief Assessment Center. John Parrow Consulting and Associates has worked for the town in the past. They conducted assessment centers for the fire lieutenant and captain, and they also did the deputy fire chief assessment center. The cost of the assessment center to do the Deputy Police Chief was $6,000. On February 7, after finalizing all the civil service documents, I notified the seven lieutenants within the police department that the position was posted and that an assessment center would take place on March 30. On February 27, the seven lieutenants were also notified that the job posting and application were live on the civil service website for Deputy Chief, and that the application deadline was March 15. After the deadline, two lieutenants signed up to participate for the assessment center. Lieutenant Alicia Columbus, the police chief's wife, and Detective Lieutenant Brian Farnum. On March 30, 2023, the assessment center, again held by John Parrow Consulting and Associates, took place, and it was an intensive interview process with many components that simulate real-world challenges that would typically be encountered by someone in the position of Deputy Chief, and it was structured as follows. The assessors that performed the evaluation were comprised of both active and retired police chiefs. John Parrow himself served as the assessment center administrator, and he has over 25 years of experience in public safety assessment centers. The candidates were not known to the assessors. They were only referred to by candidate number. Names were added to the score sheets after all exercises were completed. All scores were submitted directly to civil service within 48 hours of the completion of the assessment centers, of the assessment center. The assessors were Police Superintendent Kenneth Lavalley, retired Lowell Police Department. He served as the police expert and led, in the lead on the development of the assessment center, and he also served as an assessor. Police Chief Richard McLaughlin, retired Belmont Police Department. He serves as an assessor. Police Chief Julian Flaherty, Arlington Police Department. She served as an assessor. Police Chief Donald Palmer Jr., retired, Groton Police Department, served as an assessor. All four assessors are considered top in their field in our experienced assessors. The exercises were chosen, that were chosen for the assessment center were customized and designed to reflect the Deputy Police Chief's position, the community, the needs of the Tewksbury Police Department. The assessment center was comprised of the following four exercises. There was an in-basket exercise where candidates had to respond appropriately to multiple items that would typically be found in an in-basket for the person of this rank. The items were customized to a like department and are based on the current and potential issues or needs. Items would include emails, memos, department forms, and reports, letters from citizens, and phone calls. The next exercise was a tactical incident simulation exercise. As a responding command officer, the candidate had to deal with an emergency incident using their training, experience, industry standards, department policies, and procedures. Additionally, this incident required the command officer to acquire assistance from outside agencies and mutual aid from surrounding police departments. There was a role-playing and problem-issue exercise. The exercise was based on a simulated situation that would require the candidate to conduct a one-on-one interview with an employee that was played by an assessor. The situation included a harassment complaint, could include a harassment complaint, employee counseling, a superior subordinate interview, and corrective steps moving forward. Finally, there was a media... Finally, there was a media exercise. Candidates addressed the media concerning a major department-related event. The candidates had to develop a prepared statement, then answer questions from the press. The assessors played the press. All candidates were evaluated equally against the same criteria and circumstances. Each exercise was scored separately. Then there was consent to scoring by all four assessors was used after all the exercises. After all four exercises were complete, the scores were totaled, results in a final overall score for each candidate, and in this case, all scores went directly to civil service as required. I sat in and observed the assessment center. I was joined by the Director of Human Resources, Teresa Belanger. We sat in the back of the room. We did not participate in any portion of the process. We left the room when the assessors scored each candidate after each exercise. No information was shared with us. After the assessment center was complete, the assessors, as a group, told me they have never seen better candidates than the ones that went through the assessment center for deputy police chief. The candidates were so good, they recommended that I, that I appoint both candidates, and I have two deputies in the department, one for operations and one for administration. They did not share the scores with me or tell me the ranking of the candidates. John Parrow submitted all the information to civil service to be processed and a list to be generated. On May 1st, 2023, I was informed by Mass. Civil Service that a list was generated for position of deputy police chief. The list that was generated had Lieutenant Columbus, number one, Lieutenant Farnham as number two. On May 24th, 2023, interviews were held with each candidate. In addition to myself conducting the interviews, there was an interview panel comprised of the Chairman of the Board of Selectment, Todd Johnson, Assistant Town Manager Steve Sadwick, Director of Human Resources, Teresa Belanger. After the interviews, all involved came to the same conclusion. Both candidates did an outstanding job, and that I should consider appointing two deputies. Since May 24th, I have spent a lot of time thinking about this appointment, because it's an important appointment for the town and for the department. I decided in the end that in the best interest of the town and of the department, both Lieutenant Columbus and Lieutenant Farnham should be appointed deputy police chief. They are well-deserving of the appointment. They exceeded my expectations during the assessment center and individual interviews. They both have had excellent careers and are dedicated to the police department. They simply deserve the appointment. I want to give you a brief history of their employment. Lieutenant Columbus was hired April 22nd, 2008. She was a patrolman from 2008 to 2016, promoted to sergeant March 2016, promoted to lieutenant September 2020. In 2014, she received the AAA Silver Safety Award recipient. In June, June 2015, she was selected as the recipient of the Spirit of M-A-W-L-E Massachusetts Women in Law Enforcement Award for Mentoring. As a sergeant, she was the supervisor of field training program, supervised all field training officers in the program. As lieutenant, she was selected as the professional standards slash accreditation manager in February 2021, with the primary focus on achieving certification and accreditation for the department. Between 2021 and 2022, she oversaw the implementation of new updated policy and procedure manual for the department. The new manual consists of 167 policies and 27 procedures. In April 2023, under her supervision and direction, the department completed the certification assessment with the Mass. Police Accreditation Committee. The department passed the assessment with no corrections and is scheduled to be awarded certification October of 2023. It's an extraordinary feat. She graduated from Tewksbury Memorial High School in 1998, graduated from St. Anselm College in 2002 with a Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice. She graduated cum laude. She graduated from Anna Maria College in 2011 with a Master's Degree in Criminal Justice with a GPA of 3.936. Lieutenant Farnham's career started August 2nd, 2004. He was a patrolman from 2005 to 2006, and then went to detective from September 18th, 2006 to 2017. That's an extraordinary feat, also after being on the force for one year. He was a patrol sergeant. He was appointed and promoted to patrol sergeant June 16th, 2017, detective sergeant December 11th, 2019. He was appointed and promoted to Detective Lieutenant Officer in Charge of Criminal Investigation/Narcotics Division in July 2020, which again is a major accomplishment. It's a major position in the department. I remember making, when the appointment was made, and I was very proud to make them. He has investigated serious criminal offenses, including robberies, larceny, serious assault on batteries, sexual assaults, as well as drug-related offenses. He's responsible for training all new detectives. He currently supervises four general detectives, one evidence detective, three drug unit detectives, two detective sergeants, three school resource officers, one domestic violence officer, one community service officer, the behavioral unit for the Tewksbury Police Department. He revamped the evidence section of the department, which he did an outstanding job. Currently oversees evidence, civil forfeiture of cash, and vehicles. He graduated from Central Catholic in the year 2000, graduated from the University of Lowell in 2011 with a Bachelor's Degree in Criminal Justice and a minor in business. Graduated from California Coast University in 2023 with a major in criminal justice and a GPA of 3.92, summa cum laude. Based on their experience that each brings, and each brings unique skills, will bring unique skills to the position, and thinking about the decision, I strongly believe that appointing quality candidates such as Lieutenant Columbus and Lieutenant Farnham and placing them in important positions to take advantage of their strengths will make the department better. One deputy would oversee operations, and the second deputy would oversee administration. The department had two deputies at one time, so this is not a new concept. I would develop and implement a reporting structure that ensures Lieutenant Columbus reports to someone other than the chief. The structure would have her report to Lieutenant Farnham on all matters pertaining to her. Any issues of significance would be dealt with by the town manager. In the end, the interaction and reporting would be, would not be much different than currently exists in the department, and there have been no problems, and in fact, there has been, there has been great success within the department. The addition of a second deputy is important, since the issues facing police departments have become more diverse and complex. Increasing community policing and engagement has become more important, as well as the need for a greater emphasis and focus on training and policies in the areas such as, but not limited to, interaction with the public, responding to calls involving mental health issues, substance abuse, domestic abuse, hate crime, hate crimes, and school safety. Annual training and updating of policies are not just a one-time occurrence any longer, but now they need to be done annually, if not more often, and the focus and commitment needs to be from an individual in a higher command than sergeant or lieutenant. Having two deputies with one focused on administration will help the department be successful in addressing these areas. Having the other deputy overseeing and focusing on operations is just as important. Working with sergeants and lieutenants will ensure that there's more accountability of day-to-day operations. Now, the funding of the second deputy will be absorbed, be absorbed within the FY24 police budget. We're able to do that because we have a retirement in the department that's sooner than we anticipated. In fact, it's a year earlier than we anticipated. We plan to not fill a lieutenant's position once these positions are filled. The incremental cost of the second deputy will be approximately $32,000, and again, will be absorbed within the funding, will be absorbed because of retirement that will occur earlier than projected. I think it's important to note that as I, as I went through this process and making this, this decision and listening to the advice of experienced assessors and going through the interview process and talking to the panel that did the interviews, you know, most, most appointments are difficult. They really are. You, you have to weigh a lot of information. But in the end, this decision was easy for me. I have two outstanding candidates. I have two excellent employees. They are going to make the department even better than it is, and I believe we have a great department. So I have no reservation about making this appointment. I think both are qualified and both are deserving. It would be a disservice to the community and to them if we don't make the appointment. I want to make it clear that the chief will need to file proper disclosures with the Ethics Commission, as he's done in the past. Since his wife is a lieutenant, that will be done. There will be a structure in place to ensure that there are no issues, and we have had no issues, so I'm comfortable in making the decision. So with that, I am letting the board know that my decision to fill the vacancy of deputy will be for two, and the appointments will be Lieutenant Alicia Columbus and Lieutenant Brian Farnham, and I am very proud to make the decision.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Montori. Let me just add a comment from my vantage point that you referenced. I sat in on the interviews, and I would 100% concur with your characterization of them. Both candidates were exceptional in the interviews, and I left that morning experience with a high level of respect for the professionalism and the amount of information that both of them were able to convey and demonstrate from a skill set and a leadership capability point of view. So I would 100% concur with your assessment of their capabilities. And with that, I'll just open this up to my colleagues who may have comments or questions.
I have a comment, I mean a question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Holland.
This is for Mr. Montori. If Lieutenant Columbus was Lieutenant Smith, would you make the same decision?
That's a great question, and I'm happy to answer it. I would, and I'll tell you why. It's because of the quality of the candidates, and it's because I want to take advantage of that quality. Also, we have the ability to swap out essentially one position and promote, you know, promote that position to deputy without impacting any of the operations in the department. If the candidates were not as qualified and did not do as well as these two candidates had done, maybe we're having a different discussion. But because of these candidates, I would say yes, I would.
All right. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yep, I have some questions.
Ms. Wellman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Montori, for your report. I asked that Town Council attend the meeting tonight, so I have some questions regarding some of the policies in the State Ethics Commission.
Want to join us up here, Counselor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you for coming. I was hoping that you would be able to give this board some guidance in this appointment. The appointment is at the discretion of the Town Manager according to the Town Charter, correct?
Correct.
Thank you very much. So I called the State Ethics Commission for guidance, and because I'm not related to either of the people that are related to each other, they can't advise me. But they did send me to the nepotism section of the state website. So, and I know this is kind of the obvious questions that it will raise in the minds of reasonable people, and so that's why I wanted to raise them here in an open and transparent way, as the Town Manager has always set that as a priority. So, reading through these, these laws, which most of us who have served in the public in one way or another have to take our ethics, you know, trainings every, every other year. So it's not new to those of us that are involved, but I would like for you to kind of tell us a little bit about how the process that the manager followed maintains the, the ethical standards required. So, for example, specific acts that are prohibited is that a public official may not hire an immediate family member. And from my understanding of the Town Manager's process, the police chief was not involved in this process at all. But if you could elaborate a little bit on how that works for the public, that would be great.
Sure, and I'd be happy to, and that is an, an excellent question, and, and you are right. It's Section 19 of 268A, the Conflict of Interest Law prohibits any public employee from participating in a matter that an immediate family member has a financial interest. So that's the general statement, and then there's all sorts of exceptions, and, and in some cases, actually strengthening of that language. So it is, I have the same understanding that in this process, the Town Manager and his team handled the testing, the application, the interviews, and now the appointment without any involvement of the chief of police in that process. That is what, that in my view complies with the ethics law. There is actually an exception in Section 19 that potentially the chief could have been given a waiver and allowed to participate in this process. He did not seek it, nor did the Town Manager consider, consider it.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Under, let's see here. When it comes to job performance and evaluations, actually, I want to go back one. One of the areas it talks about is that it does not make a difference whether an official has unilateral authority over personnel decisions, or whether he or she is one link in a bureaucratic chain of approvals. Do you find the reporting structure meets that standard?
Yes.
As proposed by the manager?
Yes, I do, and I would, and I would say, I would, I would offer this, that what has happened so far as it relates to the reporting structure is Chief Columbus has preliminarily drafted the updated disclosures. So there would be two separate disclosures, one under Section 23 of 268A and one under Section 19. Section, for the purpose of what we're talking about, the Section 19 one is the more important When that disclosure is filed, he is asking the Town Manager for guidance. In addition to receiving an allowance to perform some activities, he's asking for the Town Manager to say, this is what I can do, and this is what I cannot do. As happened when Sergeant Columbus was promoted to Lieutenant Columbus, the Town Manager will put forth a structure that basically has two separate elements in it. Much of the day-to-day supervision will be, will fall under the realm of, if it, if it were to happen, Deputy Farnham, and then anything of significance would be reported and be dealt with by the Town Manager. So, when it comes to the, the, the point that I think that you were referencing, the, if, if the chief were to say, we're getting ready to hire a deputy, and I'm going to appoint a subordinate to make a recommendation that a family member will be part of that process, I think that would be prohibited.
Right.
But the Section 19 structure that I envision being put in place in this case is something that in my view, the ethics law allows.
Okay, thank you for that. So that answers my next couple of questions, actually. How does it work, or how do you think it will work when it comes to salaries and benefits vis-à-vis the, the manager, the police chief? Because he cannot vote on anything that has a financial interest, including his wife's salary, so.
Mm-hmm. So, so certainly, he, he will not be able to have any role, in my, in my opinion, and this is a question I have not been asked yet, but if, when we get to that point, it would be my opinion that the police chief could not have any say in the compensation for either deputy. In other words, he couldn't say, in theory, if Lieutenant Farnham is promoted to deputy, he couldn't say. he couldn't say, oh, I think Lieutenant Farnham, now deputy, should be paid X, knowing that it would have an impact on potentially Deputy Columbus's salary. So it would be my recommendation that the Chief of Police would have to abstain from any discussions concerning salary or fringe benefits for either of the deputies.
I also looked at the town's personnel policies, and I noted that the first one under avoiding conflict of interest says that you must act in a manner that does not create or appear to create a conflict of interest. I'm very concerned about the appear to create. It says that they will be seeking State Ethics Commission, Commission statements, and we've already talked about that, and they'll, they'll be filed as appropriate as they have always been done. They also can obtain an opinion from Town Council. Have you given an opinion in this matter to any of the participants? Have you been asked for one?
I have not been asked for an official opinion. If I could also just, just comment on the appearance issue.
Yes, please.
That you mentioned, that's the second disclosure that the chief has filed and will update. The Section 23 disclosure is the one that deals with any potential appearance of a conflict. So I just wanted to make sure that that was, that that was known. So, no, in, in this case, what Chief Columbus did, as he did during the lieutenant promotion process, he contacted Ethics directly, and, and because he is involved, because this, it is an individual, right? Right? It's the, because it's the individual who's impacted. He did speak with Ethics and received an opinion that would be consistent with what I'm, with, with what I am saying here. Town Council can issue a written opinion on any matter under 268A. That opinion gets filed with the town clerk, with the subject of the opinion, and with Ethics, and Ethics has time to respond to it if they wish.
Okay. All right, that's what I wanted to note, so thank you for that. Let's see. Do you think that a structure like this creates a chilling effect on reporting within the department? So for, for staff in the department, would this create a chilling effect to have a husband and wife running the department?
I do not think so, but what I would say is this, that many police departments have brothers who are, have a chief who's a brother with another brother who's part of it, or have children. And I think that it would be obvious to say that's always a concern. And one thing which the Town Manager has said, and I, I think that I have always said is this, retaliation is worse than any original act, in that if somebody does bring forward a complaint on something, the, the closest thing that we can do is guarantee there will be no retaliation against anyone at any time over anything. So, do I think it creates a chilling effect? I do not, just as I don't think it, it is what happened when Sergeant Columbus was promoted to lieutenant. But ultimately, it will be up to, you know, people in this room to make sure it stays that way.
Sure, sure. I don't have any further questions at this time. I have some thoughts that I'll maybe say later, depending on the conversation. Thank you very much, Mr. Feely, thank you.
My pleasure, and thank you all for the reappointment. I am honored and I really appreciate it.
Thanks for being here for it.
All right, any other questions?
Actually, let me ask, are there any questions on my left? For Town Council?
Not for Town Council.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor.
All right, Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Ms. Wellman was very thorough, and I got to cross off a number of my questions, some I didn't think of, so. My only, kind of last question is the, I want to make sure I understand this correctly. We are not backfilling lieutenant role, and that is the, that equates to about $32,000.
The incremental increase by not filling is $32,000. You're not paying for a full position.
Okay, and is there a thought that, you know, that lieutenant position might show up on next year's budget?
Right now, there's not a thought of that. I mean, I never say never in any position, if things change, but right now, no.
Okay, thank you very much.
So I went through this pretty hard as well. I, I know this is a different situation, it doesn't happen in a lot of communities, and it's something that I'm sure a lot of people were questioning. But I did some thought over it, and I looked through a number of departments. You look through a lot of police departments, it is a family thing where sometimes the chief goes through and there's a brother, a cousin, an uncle. It's not like any other department. We have firefighters that go through, we have, our fighter chief is the son of an ex firefighter. You know, we have police officers that are sons of the ex-chief that went through. It's a family thing, that they take pride, they take, you know, something that they give their life in service, and they're brought to talk, to, to give back to the community. It's not something that we should take lightly, because every day, these people put their lives out into the public, where they may not go home. And I, I speak very, from the heart of this, having a brother who's a police officer, my son works at a police department, I, I worry about that all the time, of, you know, am I going to get that call? Something went wrong, when that happens. And I, I take pride, and I think this whole board takes pride in that we have never picked somebody because somebody was the favorite of somebody, that somebody was related to somebody, a call came in, give that person this, give that. But I don't want to be also the first one to harm somebody who is well-deserving, came in front of us, went through all the rankings, did everything was supposed to, you do, grew up in this community, has given her life to this community, and as well as Lieutenant Farnham, who's given this thing. It shouldn't be diminished on either one of them. Both of them are qualified, both of them have earned this right, and the fact that you're related to somebody should not be held against you, especially when one day one of those may have to go home and not know if that other person's coming home. You're going to take that into your consideration. I know it's something that I do when I make these calls, because, you know, firefighter goes to work, a police officer goes to work, you know, we go to work, and yeah, maybe we have a bad day. They go to have a bad day, they may not come home. So this is something that they take very highly, they respect each other. The department, and I always love to tell this story, our police department and our fire department are the two communities that get together better than almost any other community that I can think of. You don't go to another city or town where they go out and they work hand in hand. We don't have any interbattles, we want this, we want that, somebody got this, somebody got that, they always work together. And this is something that's like a family thing, that they are all family members in this community. And to punish somebody that is more than, I mean, this listing was done, we paid money to have experts qualify somebody to make this decision. I have zero reasons not to make that decision on anything, and I'm certainly not going to make the decision because you just happen to be married to somebody. I'm not going to harm somebody because you are the most qualified person for this job. So with that, I, I want to make a recommendation to agree with the Town Manager's recommendation, and I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay, before I ask for a second on that, let me just offer a couple of comments on my part, because as I said earlier, I sat in on the interviews and I was very, very impressed, and I think we live in a time where public service is challenging, in particular police service is exceptionally challenging. And we, as laypeople who are responsible for setting the culture and the tone in Tuxbury to attract qualified candidates to potentially join our police force, have a responsibility to make sure that we have a good environment for them to want to be here. And that starts with having and supporting people who demonstrate the skills, the tenacity, the enthusiasm, and all of the things that are required to be successful in a police profession that's very, very challenging today. And both of these people, it's already been said, have proven that throughout this process, and more importantly, throughout their entire career with the Town of Tuxbury, going back to 2004 in one situation, and I believe it was 2008 in the second situation. So we're not talking about something that is just a year or two in the making. And I think that's very important. I also believe that the five people at this table, and I'll include the Town Manager as the sixth person, we, on occasion, actually, no, let me restate that, we're required by virtue of where we sit on this side of the table to lead. And on occasion, we need to lead explicitly. Sometimes we make decisions, many of them this evening, we, we're leading the community in various areas. But in this example, we need to be explicit in our leadership. I've sat here for a long time, I've served with Ms. Estronik, who spoke earlier, and I will say that there has not been one single decision that I have ever made at this table that I did not believe was the right thing for Tuxbury. And to Mr. Montori's point, when you go through this process and you assess the pros and the cons of this decision as we would with any other decision, this is an easy decision to support because it is, in Ms. Estronik's words, the right thing for Tuxbury. So I feel pretty strongly about it, and I guess I would say that I might be a little biased, to use that word, but that's because I sat in the room and I saw the evidence firsthand. So if that makes me biased, I'll stand on it. But I was there in the room, and I listened to what they had to say, and I've seen them in action. So I believe this is the right thing for Tuxbury.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Wellman.
May I make some comments pending the conversation?
Certainly.
Before you call for a second?
Sure.
Thank you very much. So I've taken this time to give this serious consideration, I've spoken to residents and public administration professionals, as well as the Post Commission, and I'm conflicted on this issue, because while I feel that a husband and wife cannot and should not run a police department together, I also know that the chief and the two deputy appointees are exceptional police department leaders. Very proud of our police department, I have no disagreement with anything my colleagues have said this evening, and recognize that the work that this chief, his officers and command staff, and their predecessors have all contributed to a robust, professional, compassionate, and ethical police department for the Town of Tuxbury. Further, I have tremendous respect for the Town Manager, and in no way wish to micromanage his work, including his role as the appointing authority, and I do believe he has conducted this search in an ethical and above-board manner. However, I believe this appointment raises the concern of a reasonable person as to the appearance of a conflict of interest and conflicts that may happen in the future. I believe this structure is contrived only for the purpose of enabling this appointment. We would not see it with any other appointment where the deputy, not an immediate family member of the chief. I believe the nature of the relationship creates an inherent lack of objectivity even in a chain of oversight, and that's my chief concern with this appointment. We are very lucky to have two exceptional candidates for this position, but this is the kind of thing that we are trying to avoid in public administration, be it a spouse or partner, a parent or a child, or other close familial relationship. And so it's, it's a very difficult decision, and I wanted to comment on that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, we, we do have a motion on the floor offered by Mr. Kratman to endorse the Town Manager's recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, point of clarification.
Mr. Mackey.
Did we establish through Town Council that a motion is not required because this is within the Town Manager's authority?
I don't know that I've asked that question, or you have.
I apologize, I, I thought that was asked through Ms. Wellman. Can we get confirmation on that?
Under the Town Charter, the, the board does not have to take any action. If the board simply lets the requisite time period lapse, the appointments are effective, the board also does have the option of voting to endorse, which would, which would end the process at that point. So it's really, it's up to the board either way.
Thank you. So this is fully within the remit of the Town Manager, and the budgetary and appointing authorities are, is?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so let me go back to, the motion is on the floor, Mr. Kratman has made it. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Mr. Holland offers a second for our recording secretary's benefit. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Chair votes aye as well.
One abstention.
You're going to abstain?
I am going to abstain.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Wellman, for the record, abstains from the vote. So that would be four votes in favor, one abstention. Thank you, Mr. Montori, you have Town Council in voice?
I do, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and thank you to the board. We have one from May 16th to May 31st, 2023, in the amount of $5,652.50. I'd recommend approval.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion offered, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, that would be unanimous.
The second is for June 1st to June 15th, 2023, in the amount of $5,227.50, and I would recommend approval.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Kratman, for the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Holland seconds, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, so that would be unanimous as well. Thank you, you have anything else?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, that brings us to minutes, Mr. Holland?
Yes, we have minutes from May 16th, 2020, 2023. Any questions?
No questions, are you offering a motion to approve those minutes, sir?
I am.
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Wellman, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Okay, so it's a four to zero vote with Mr. Mackey abstaining. That brings us to board member reports, let me start with Mr. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing to report, we won't meet again before the holiday weekend, so wishing everyone a happy and safe holiday, and I hope to see everyone at the festivities.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Wellman?
Just really briefly, we had an elementary school building committee meeting last week, we're meeting again in August. It looks as though the consultant that was hired to give a recommendation on the flooring issue has made a recommendation to remove the filling pieces between the wood strips, and they anticipate that that will solve the problem for the most part. There are some other issues with some heating units that are being addressed with new parts that are being brought in from China by the manufacturer, and then that should manage the heating and conditioning in some parts of the building. There was some sustained conversation around that, but I think generally it was very well handled by the professionals in the room, and I don't have anything else to add on this elementary school building committee. We're looking during the final phase of the whole thing, and the closeout will finish, it looks like, in April of next year with our final reimbursement from MSBA.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Kratman?
Thank you. I met with the LRTA, we went over their budget, we're going to be, we have a meeting tomorrow to approve the budget, but we went over it and we went through it on the numbers, trying to get ridership is increasing, people are starting to use public service. With that said, I also want to make an announcement where LRTA and many other places is making announcements, because the Sumner Tunnel is closing. So residents that are going to Logan Airport starting July 5th at 12 o'clock, the Sumner Tunnel is closing for two months, so plan ahead. If you're trying to get there, there's go to the Sumner Tunnel website, go to the LRTA, there's a lot of different options you can use by, and they're going to have times out on the highway. From what I'm told right now, if you take the, if you go take the commuter rail and you get to Woburn Station and you take the shuttle, you'll get there in a fourth of the time it would take you if you drive there. So you may want to take that into consideration. Other option, maybe go to Mansfield Airport, not go to Logan Airport, but with that said, just take that into consideration, we're going to be going over the budget, we're promoting those things, telling people it's going to be difficult getting to the city of Boston for the next couple of months, think ahead. The other thing I have is we have the Fourth of July celebration, which is happening on the third. I want to thank the Town Manager and all his staff for helping and getting everything together. I met with the police chief, the fire chief, the DPW, everybody in the town, public health, we've all sat through, we've planned it, we've worked together, we're going to have daytime events during the third, all the kids' stuff, there's going to be a family going to be a family-friendly event. We have entertainment at night, weather permitting. We're hoping this rain will stop. The roadway is going to be closed off at some point. We have the message boards out there. We'll take a look out there, and the fireworks are going off at 9:30. I hope you have a beautiful night, and I welcome everybody to join us. So, ahead.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Holland?
Yes, I just have one thing. I'd like to congratulate the high school graduates again. I had the, I went, I attended, you know, and I have to say one thing, that principal should be the town's weatherman, because soon as I pulled in the parking lot, the sun came out. It was beautiful.
Thank you. Okay, I, the only thing I want to report on is we, we have, four of us at this table have put in a fair amount of time on the retail marijuana licensing process. If anyone has been paying attention following that process, we continued all the hearings to July 18, and we, in the interim, are seeking comments, input from residents, the public. We've had a couple of communications in the last few days. I want to encourage and remind residents that that window remains open for the next few weeks, but as with all things, it will eventually close. So, if you have a concern or a comment about an application or the topic in general that you want this board to be made aware of, now is the time to make that known in writing through the Town Manager's office to the Board of Selectment, excuse me, the Select Board. And we also have endeavored to ask the actual applicants some additional questions that board members have thought of since they digested the various hearings that we held. And that communication, if it has not gone out already, will be going out in the next day or two.
It's going out tomorrow.
Yeah, thank you. And we're asking the applicants to respond in advance of our July 18 meeting, so that this board will have the benefit of being able to review the responses in time for that particular meeting. So, again, I want to emphasize to the public, we have tried to make this process as inclusionary as possible. We welcome feedback and commentary, but at this point, we are closing in on July 18, and we make, like to make sure that, that information is in our hands in advance, so we can consider whatever input you wish to give us. Thank you for that. All right, I have nothing else, so I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Mr. Krappman, seconded by Mr. Holland. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. We're now adjourned at 8:53. Thank you.